There's nothing on appeal, appeal.
Okay, good evening and welcome to tonight's meeting. Today is uh
Recording in progress.
Today is Tuesday, November the fifteenth, uh twenty twenty-two, the time is about six P M. The regular meeting of the city council, the city of Trinidad will now be ordered. Please write for the president.
President.
Absolutely, ma'am. I pledge allegiance to the republic of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Have a roll call, please.
Uh, I believe the meeting is moving.
Is that better? Kenny Harris?
No, we can hear you now.
Devono?
Here.
Griegego?
Here.
Ogoltri? Chu?
Here.
Williamson?
Here.
Rico?
Here. Approve of you to the agenda. Council have any items they want to change to the agenda? Any, anything to motion?
Still move.
Second?
Second.
All vote?
Devono?
Yes.
Griegego?
Yes.
Ogoltri? Oh, God. Chu? Sorry. Thurman?
Here.
Yes.
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Item three, policy item and staff reports. Mr. Rube, do you have anything?
Fair enough for tonight.
Okay. Three eight, third quarter, uh twenty twenty-two financial report. Ms. Navarette, did that flip out?
Good evening, mayor, council members, city manager here. And members of the audience. Welcome tonight. We're here to discuss the third quarter financials.
Don't turn these on right there.
Well done.
Alright, so we'll start off with the third quarter or general fund, third quarter through September. Uh, general fund revenues are one point two percent or excuse me, one point two million over budgeted or seven point six percent. At the end of the third quarter, um let's see, our tax revenue was under, or excuse me, over collected. Sorry, backwards. Oh, under collected by forty-six thousand dollars. As you can see, sales and use taxes have jumped up significantly. I believe at the end of the um June, we were under collected by about a hundred and forty thousand, I believe. So it bounced back nicely. I would like to attribute that to the um August and September sales tax, which was over collected by eighty-five thousand um compared to August and September of last year. And I believe it's due to the stimulus payment from Colorado. So it's too soon to tell that revenues have bounced back. If that had not happened, I don't think we would have been seeing this increase. But it did catch up somewhat to what was budgeted. As we continue to see sales tax for marijuana decline, uh we are under collected what was budgeted by three hundred and thirty thousand. So far this year, we've um in the third quarter, we collected six hundred and forty-four thousand as compared to the third quarter of twenty twenty-one when we collected one point one million. So we are forty-one percent um under collected compared to this time last year. Our licenses and permits are over collected by a hundred and eighteen thousand, and that's relative to the building permits because of our summer hailstorm. So we had a lot of contractors coming in for the permits for roofing. Intergovernmental, intergovernmental revenue has been over collected by nine hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars. Um, if you recall, we received the second tranche from ARPA of one point, one million thirty thousand. And then also we have, and that was not budgeted for. We also received thirty-eight thousand sorry, three hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars more in severance tax. Uh, we originally budgeted thirty thousand and we received three hundred and eighty-seven. So that's significant increase in the governmental revenue. And finally miscellaneous revenue is over collected by a hundred and seventy thousand. Fifty thousand of that is on interest on our investments. So interest has bounced back significantly, more than I thought in every month. Every month it's um, we're collecting just a little bit more than the prior month. So that's, that's some good news. And also we collected a hundred and seventy thousand, excuse me, a hundred and seven thousand dollars more than budgeted in the mineral lease. We received that money in September. So that's a significant increase for miscellaneous revenue. Again, that being said, we are one point two, three, uh, one million, two hundred and thirty-eight thousand over collected in revenue in general fund. Any questions?
Sure. What does all entail in charges for services?
Charges for services includes um the paving, patching and repairs. Oh, gosh. Good question. The community center revenue, swimming pool revenue, other recreational revenue, which I could have highlighted, recreational revenue. It dumped quite a bit because of COVID and now we're eight thousand dollars more than budgeted. So it's bouncing back with the children's activities, um the youth sports. So that, that's good news. And then also, I think that's probably, oh, um development fees, building plan review, and then dispatch and E ninety-one revenue. Those are charges for services. Any questions?
I have a question.
Yes, yeah.
So on our sales tax revenue, our marijuana, we don't, do we have any set expenses going out of that account besides the supplemental that we do every quarter?
I believe, right, we have that expended, but I also, we have the fifty thousand dollars that we transferred to tourism for the event planner salary. That's set. And then I don't know that we established anything else.
And I think that's just a yearly fifty thousand.
No, yeah, it was just fifty thousand. That's the only thing that's um set.
So we can adjust what we're spending on marijuana taxes because it's so.
Well, we'll, again, we'll go back to the fact that you don't approve marijuana expenses until you know what we are collecting. So that's the same grace there.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. No questions?
Any other questions?
And then we're gonna move on to the general fund expenses. We are over expended by six hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars or four point three percent. And we are going, most of the departments are over expended and that's due to the COVID payout that we did in April. And that amounted to seven hundred and sixteen thousand in the general fund. So there's a portion of our over expenditure because that was not budgeted. And also we are over expended in fleet by a million dollars, which includes the two fire department apparatuses. We did encumber those funds. However, we're dipping into reserves to pay for those vehicles. And they won't be here next, this year, and I'm not positive both will be here next year. I think one maybe, and then the other will be the following. So we're just gonna have to continue to re-budget that. Any questions on general funds?
Just answer a procedure question for us. So it, it shows in the budget that we're off. But that COVID pay, I remember we got that from federal monies, correct?
Right.
So why is it, why is it offsetting our budget so much?
So it was, we received, actually we received two million. A million of it we did not expend. They're using it for Bob, but on earth we put it away. And then the other million was used for um the COVID pay.
Right.
So you'll see that we've collected a million dollars more than anticipated in um intergovernmental revenue. So we're over collected by nine hundred and seventy thousand.
I see.
But then the offset is in the expense of seven hundred and sixteen thousand.
Okay.
Yeah. And, and we never take the revenue and put it against those expenses because we need to see what our true expenses are. Especially when it comes to salary, because during the audit, the auditor likes to pull our expense line on the salary and match it against the W twos. So we would never put that revenue against the expense line and we recognize them on both sides of the court. Any further questions? So we'll move on to the power and light revenue. Uh, power and light revenue is over collected by ninety-five thousand dollars. Um, eighty-nine thousand of that is, it's sitting in other revenues. And that is because that there's a line item called miscellaneous jobbing where we collect money for transformers that were putting into the building projects. So for example, um the new hotel, um Rice School, we've collected that funding to purchase those transformers. So we build out those um contractors. So that's, that's our over collection at the time. Um, also, you can see that we're over collected in charges for services, which is our utility building. And then that happens in the third quarter, those revenues catch up to um what's budgeted because the summer or the third sea, third quarter is the hotter season and that's when you see the significant use of electricity. And we'll move on to expenditures, which are over by one percent or seventy-seven thousand dollars. Again, we're gonna go to distribution and operating expense. We are over, or over expended by a hundred and forty-four thousand. And seventy-four thousand of that is for those transformers that we talked about. And thirty-four thousand of that is for the stock wire. We, we just needed to purchase some stock wire, hadn't purchased it in a while. And we did that, we did so when we purchased the wire for the Loop Parter project. So there's a thirty-five thousand dollar overage there, which was not planned for to build up stock and wire. And finally, we're over expended in capital outlay um by, let's see, a hundred and sixty-two thousand. That is due to the forty-one sixty breaker project, which came in two hundred thousand dollars more than we originally budgeted. So that money or that expense will be backfilled by the marijuana cultivation. We'll be transferring in about two hundred thousand dollars to cover that overage for power and light. And there are any spend, or, sorry. Are there any questions?
No.
One bunch of water. Okay, water revenues are under collected by one point seven. Uh, ninety-three thousand of that is in our charges for services. And honestly, I haven't had a chance to look into that because typically in the third quarter, water catches up to its budgeted revenue. I don't know if it was a milder summer. Um, same thing happened in sewer because water and sewer are related. So I need to sit down with um Mark the Hill and see if we can figure out why it was under collected. But I, I kind of have a feeling that we had a milder summer and just maybe not as wa, not as much watering.
Well, if you go together, it does make a lot of sense that that's probably more than likely what happened.
Yeah, sewer is based on water consumption. So. Um, our expenses, we are one point one percent over or thirty-five thousand dollars. It's not significant in overall. However, in distribution and coordination, they are over expended by a hundred and twenty-seven thousand. And that has to do to the distribution price, um the material increase. It was significant, at least sometimes at least forty percent increase in price. And every time they go to purchase something else, they don't purchase it at that moment, it'll increase by, you know, two to three hundred dollars the next time we meet that purchase. Also, um over expenditure in the, the, I believe it was in vehicles. And that was fourteen thousand dollars in hail damage. Um, but we did receive the insurance proceeds to offset that. And the pump station, they had to rebuild the Allendale pump station, which was fifteen thousand dollars. So there's some significant expenditures there. Finally, in the filtration plant, we are over expended by twenty-seven thousand dollars. Again, chemicals and lab supplies are, the, the price increases have just been almost unbearable, but we have to have that product. So filtration plant is over by five thousand through September, and I know they just put in a big purchase order in October for more chemicals. So that will definitely be over by the end of the year. And also the treatment plant, they had to put in a replacement pump of nine thousand dollars. So that's your significant overages in the filtration plant. And that's it for water. Does anybody have any questions?
Any questions? Any questions from you guys that are virtual? Okay.
Alright, we'll move on to gas fund. Uh, revenue is under collected by a point four percent or fifteen thousand dollars. You'll see that in your charges for services, twenty-nine thousand under collected. But the summer months are the warmer months and we're just not collecting revenue at that time. This is one that's related to seasonal. So in January, we see a big jump in revenues and then it takes down. And then in the fourth quarter, we'll see it jump back up again. So. Our expenses are over by a hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars and you can see that in our gas purchases over by a hundred and twenty-seven thousand. I'm not sure if you recall, but the gas department director uh told you that they were gonna start charging us for the gas storage. And through September, they had charged us five hundred and eighty-six thousand to store the, the gas. However, once we start using it, it'll get subtracted out of that and start to balance out. But this is the first year that this has happened, so I'm not sure, I don't know that we'll see a significant decrease by December thirtieth or if we'll recognize it all in the first quarter of twenty twenty-three. So this is something new. We gotta watch to see how it plays out. But this is, that's how we're gonna track it, is just booking the charges for gas storage separately and then the charges against them. Um, are there any questions for gas?
The only thing that I'm seeing is that, matter of fact, I just saw today where things Colorado Springs is looking at a decrease in the gas and other places are looking at an increase. So it's kind of, it's, it's volatile right now. So we just don't know where it's going.
And then by them charging us separately for the gas storage, we haven't consumed it, but we're getting built for it. So that, that's making it really, it's hard to read.
Sure. If there's a supply chain issue, let's say there's a pump that we need or some type of component that we need, and it doesn't get here for four or five months, is that price locked in or if the price of that manufactured item jumps twenty or thirty percent, do, are they not charging us the extra twenty or thirty percent or is it locked in at the price that they give you?
So yes and no. Most of them are honoring the price that they previously quoted. But we spoke about those transformers for power and light, quoted a surprise of thirty-four thousand. By the time it was delivered, it was thirty-nine thousand. So it just.
So there's not really a lock or a guarantee of?
Mostly, we seem locked in prices. So it just, it just depends.
Okay.
Alright, if no questions, we'll move on to the sewer revenue. Uh, we've over collected by one point six percent or thirty thousand dollars. Again, uh, in the charges for services, you'll see that we're under collected by seventeen thousand and sewer is related to the water consumption. So it just, it has to have been a milder summer. And then uh we are over collected in miscellaneous income by twenty-five thousand and that's because every year we, or we pay Jacobs Engineering a flat amount and a portion of that is for capital improvements. And whatever they don't use for capital improvements, they reimburse to us at the beginning of the year. So that's a reimbursement from Jacobs. Where is that in your share? Uh, the miscellaneous income, I said thousand, yes.
They've done a good job in actually saving us money. Once we got them.
Yeah. Our sewer expenditures are one point, one point one percent under or twenty thousand um under budget. And it's just, there just haven't been any significant expenses in, in the sewer department. Okay, if there are no questions, we move on to landfill. We spend less. Landfill fund is over collected by ten point three percent or you can see the charges for services of forty-seven thousand dollars more. And that's related to the roofing project. So we have a significant dumping at the landfill because of that. Um, our expended, expenses are under by three point four percent or twenty-one thousand dollars. And that's just because I haven't posted that closure, closure and post-closure expense, which is around thirty-nine thousand dollars. So I'll post that in December and then that, it'll, the general, uh, landfill general is, landfill expenditures should start to even out. And then you can see that we have in capital outlay, two hundred and sixty thousand, sixty-seven thousand dollars encumbered for the wheel loader, which we were supposed to receive in May. And then they're supposed to receive in August. And now we're being told it'll be the end of November. So we'll see if we're gonna receive that equipment. If not, I'm gonna have to re-budget it next year and you'll see it in the new budget. Alrighty, uh lottery fund, we are over collected by ten thousand dollars. And we are over expended by twenty-three thousand dollars. That might increase somewhat. We have budgeted fifty thousand dollars in swimming pool repairs, something that we're gonna be doing this winter, but we're then replacing the pump and the boiler. But anyway, it's about fifty thousand dollars and we had only budgeted fifteen. So lottery is going to be dipping into its reserves to make those repairs.
How much reserve do we have in the lottery fund? Do you have any property?
I would say a hundred and forty-one thousand. Let's pop in some money. Tourism, over collected by eighty, eighty-two thousand dollars, forty-eight thousand of that is in tourism lodging packs. And second and third quarter are our biggest quarters to collect those. So. Um, we are also, um, something that was budgeted for was the the fifteen thousand dollars that I transferred over for the COVID pay. So that's just making it look over collected, but that's how it's bouncing out. And our expenditures also, they are over expended by a hundred and forty-four thousand dollars. And what they've done, um, they spent forty-seven thousand dollars more in advertising, twenty-seven thousand dollars more in billboards, and then they encumber, we encumbered the expense of seventy-seven thousand dollars for their transport van. So they are also dipping into their reserves uh to account for those expenses. However, they have those reserves and they probably need to be expending them. So it's, it's a good thing. And I wanna say their reserves are between three fifty and four hundred thousand dollars. So, and when they present their budget for twenty twenty-three, they'll be dipping into those reserves again.
Yeah. And if, like you, like you're saying, it's probably a good idea because if we don't start utilizing some of that money, we will probably hear that from our auditor to say that we need to spend some of that money down.
Yeah, but how much do they have in, in reserves, three hundred and fifty?
I think it's about three fifty.
But if we're going like we are, it's only gonna take a couple of years for that.
Oh, they typically present a fat, flat budget. So if their budgeted revenue was four hundred, they'll expand it four hundred. Just these past two years, they expended more so that they can dip into those.
So explain the process to me. I apologize, but.
So they over expended on billboards. Do they ask you before they expand? They do. And, good question. I always do a budget amendment at the end of the year and I have a letter from the tourism board asking city council to increase their budget to account for these expenditures. So because twenty twenty-two, they did not expend, or they did not budget to over expend, they're gonna ask for permission. So then we have to amend our twenty twenty-two budget.
Okay.
Okay. But next year, they're gonna ask for it upfront and they'll, they'll automatically be dipping in their reserves. And if council reserves are, if council approves our twenty twenty-three budget, we shouldn't need a budget amendment because I don't think they'll expend more than they're asking at this point. Does that make sense? Alright, finally, we're in the capital fund. Capital, we're over collected by two point seven. And that is, if you recall, last time, um, I told you that I recognized all of the Colorado creative industry grants for space to create in Fox, which was five million dollars. So we recognized all of that in twenty twenty-two. However, whatever the Fox doesn't spend this year, we're gonna carry it forward next year and then they'll re-budget it. We are under expended by twelve million dollars in capital. Um, two mil, or one million of that is sitting in the ADA improvements for city buildings. We just, we haven't expended that this year. We're not sure if we're gonna be using that for the groundstands at Carson or whatever, but we have been locking away that million dollars for ADA improvements, just per the, the judgment. We're under expended by two point five million or, I'm sorry, two million in the Fox Theater, again, related to the Colorado creative industry grants. They're moving along. They have their um contractors on board, but there's just some money left over for the next step in their, or the next phase of their project. So that will be carried forward to two thousand twenty-three as well. We uh have not spent five point three million dollars because we're waiting to see on the quotes for the First Street project. And, and then we haven't spent a million dollars in Loop Parter Maricon Road just because contractor's moving along and he's drawing down as he can, but we're gonna estimate what he will finish to the end of the year and then carry forward what's left over into twenty twenty-three. And that's all I got. Any questions?
Any questions?
No, we have, excellent.
Frank or uh, Aaron, do you have any questions? Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Good job.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, awesome.
Okay, on to item four, petitions or communications are overwritten. We have item A, EcoTech Biopills introduction. Are they here to present?
Yes, we are.
Okay. Go ahead.
Thank you so much for making time for us tonight. Um, I'm here with Gavin Parker, our chief technical officer, who's going to give a brief summary of our engineering processes and partners. But first, just a quick summary, we're not gonna take too much of your time, but just wanted to give you a quick summary of what we're planning to do here. So a couple of weeks ago, we had a meeting with the city of Trinidad, local officials, city manager, other people. And I was really delighted by the support we received. One of the big questions we had was can this area support our infrastructure requirements? And we got a responding yes, which was absolutely wonderful. So the purpose of our project, and I hope everyone had a copy of our executive summary, which I forwarded, okay? So the purpose of the project, I grew up in Colorado Springs and have to say, our forests are not the same as they were when I was a kid at all. It, it's really upsetting to, to drive, especially in the southern part of the state where you pass mile after mile of dead and diseased trees. So what we're planning to do is to remove these dead and diseased trees before they catch fire. And the, the point of that is to prevent these fires. And the material that we're extracting, we can convert to sustainable jet fuel, which is a product very much in demand right now. So um, both United Airlines and Delta are buying for the product. They wanna buy it all. And we'll probably go with Delta, but this is, you know, please keep this to yourself, um, because we haven't announced it yet. Um, so the thing I wanted to stress this evening is the benefits to Trinidad. Um, one of the greatest benefits will be the, the job creation. So just direct hires at this plant after construction. And construction includes hundreds of jobs, but permanent, long-term jobs will be over ninety people. And I believe, you know, I have a long history of management at some of the And I believe, you know, I have a long history of management at some of the big law firms in, you know, Southern California. And what I learned the hard way is that if you treat your people well, they will do their very best to meet and exceed your expectations. So we're gonna do that in a big way. We're gonna have benefits for safety. We're gonna have recreation areas. One of my pet things is childcare. So we'll support parents who have children. I'd like to have childcare nearby so that you can visit them on your light tower if we can. But there's much that we'd like to do that I think will make you happy. But just the salaries, just the direct salaries to our employees will amount to over ten million dollars in here. So because people will have more money to spend, there will be a demand for the things they want to buy. So people will have more money to spend on restaurants, going out, movies, recreation. We'll also need more legal support, more medical support, uniform processing service. Quite a few other jobs will be added and we will need to feed our employees because the plant operates twenty four seven. So there'll be culinary services required and quite a bit more. If you give me the breakdown if you're interested. But the the thing that totally breakthrough for us is I think we found the perfect site for this project. We won't announce it publicly until we've got it under contract. But it looks like it will meet our our purposes very well. I will be in the area. I'm currently in in the Black Hills. But I will be in the area right after Thanksgiving, Monday after Thanksgiving. And I will walk the site just to make sure it's okay before we put in a contract on it. And I hope that I can meet some of you if you're available during that time. Okay? So Dan Parker, he's gonna provide a, he's have, is it over forty six years now of experience in biofuels, Dan? He looks, he looks like. Yeah, he looks like a kid, but he's got a lot of experience. Anyway, so Dan's gonna give a summary of our our engineering partners and the processes. And then if you have any questions, be happy to answer them. And I hope that you have my contact information so you can ask me questions by email, call me. We're really looking forward to getting this stuff. Okay, over to you, Dan.
All right, great. Thank you, Linda Rose, and good evening, council members. Eco Tech Biofuels has a proven technology that's called the Gas to Liquids. And our technology gasifies biomass of of various sorts, in this case, a wood waste biomass. It's kind of like a big boiler that burns with low oxygen and creates what's called the syngas. And then we take that syngas and use the carbon in it and the hydrogen in it to reform into hydrocarbons. Hydrocarbons go through essentially a mini refinery and we come out with a product that's a sustainable aviation fuel. We can also produce some small amounts of diesel fuel and and naphtha, which is basically gasoline. But that generally can be recycled back into the process and reconverted into aviation fuel, which is our primary problem. You can basically look at the technology as a small power plant, thermal power plant, combined with a mini refinery. And the the plant and process itself generates a fair amount of heat. And we collect that heat and use it to run turbines to generate power. So we're actually a net power generator as well. So in addition to the fuel output, we also have a power output. We are using one of the leading engineering firms on the planet, Black and Beach. And they will be supplying full engineering procurement and construction for the project. So we have absolutely one of the best firms behind us to put together the package. Our our other technology suppliers are also some of the best on the planet. Thermal Gem Recovery International produces the gasifier. And emerging field technology provides the downstream refining and and what's called the Fisher throat, which converts the syngas to the to the liquid hydrocarbons that then get refined into the fuel. So it's it's really a stellar team that is definitely best in class. And we're looking forward to building a plant on the on the the site adjacent to Trinidad. It looks like a perfect site for us and has all of the systems and utilities that we need.
So if anyone is available on Monday afternoon, I would love to to meet you either in the, you know, at the City Hall or just tell me where. So look forward to working with you all and thank you so much for being so welcoming to us. I'm I'm really looking forward to doing this project.
Do you have a phone number in case we wanted to contact you to meet you on Monday?
I'm sorry, I didn't quite get that.
Do you have a, do you have a contact number, a phone number that you're gonna meet her by?
Yes, it's on, it's on the executive summary that you received. All my info is on there.
Okay, thank you. Questions?
Yes, ma'am, I was gonna ask you, I was reading some of the biofuel companies have consulted and corroborated with the Department of Agriculture because of the different species of trees in in specific areas are used for converting a lot of the biofuels to liquid and and hydrocarbon fuels. So have you consulted or does your company consult with the Department of Agriculture at all?
So if you're talking about the USDA, yes, the Forest Service is under the auspices of the USDA. And some of my best friends and supporters are at the national level of the USDA Forest Service. So absolutely. And they're the ones that pointed me towards the Rio Grande National Forest in Dan Dallas. We were hoping to do a project, just FYI, I I'm very transparent. You ask me any question, I'll give you the truth, that true answer. But so we were hoping to do a project in Black Hills. The supervisor then at the Black Hills, Mark Van Everie, was very excited about the idea of our taking beetle killed trees and converting them to fuel. And then he retired and the succession of interim supervisors realized that they had that one of their sawmill companies had come and clear cut huge areas of the forest. They had management problems. And my friend Julie Tucker, who's at the national level of the USDA, helped me arrange a meeting where with national, regional people where we decided that we have to put a pin in the Black Hills. And, you know, Colorado is a much better place and that was always gonna be part of the plan. So so that's that's why we're not doing the project in the Black Hills, just in case you noticed. But I I believe that Dan Dallas at at the Rio Grande has really put in a lot of work to prepare the way for a company like ours and we can't wait to get started.
Thank you. Other questions?
I have a question. I'm sorry, I didn't get the executive summary. But just in a nutshell, what are you asking the city of Trinidad to contribute to your project?
All we asked for in the meeting that we had two weeks ago was can we count on the community to to welcome us? We don't need money from you. We may ask the Colorado for some matching funds to help us with some of the infrastructure upgrades. But we just need to make sure that if we come into the area and begin this plant, we won't throw us out of town. And we needed to make sure that we could get connection to water, natural gas, power, et cetera. I I never like to go where I'm not wanted, but the answer that we got was we're happy to have you. So that's that's all we want. And we will, I promise you, we will work very cooperatively with the city and you'll be happy that we're here.
Of the ninety employees that you're tentatively gonna employ, are you bringing those employees in? Or are you gonna hire from the local workforce?
I will always hire locally whenever possible. And another aspect, we want to work with the local community colleges. And I understand that Martin O'Callaghan is going to have a trucking school. I've told them we'll hire those guys because we'll need truckers. We will work with the local universities to hire our engineering talent. We will have unpaid internships. I do not believe in unpaid internships. So that people can learn on the job so we can grow our own town. So we won't be bringing people in from other states unless there's nobody in town, that nobody in the area that can do the job. And that's rather narrow locally.
Alright, thank you.
Other questions?
I have, I have no questions. I just wanted to say Linda Rose and Dan, thank you so much for your time. This sounds like an exceptional opportunity and I'm so thrilled by what we've heard tonight. Thank you so much.
Looking forward to meeting you, Aaron. Thank you.
Likewise.
Anything?
Okay, everyone.
I do have a couple of questions here. You know, the the trees that you're gonna be using, are they just a one type of tree? Are you gonna be able to use any particular, whether they're elm trees, pino trees? What type of trees are able to utilize?
So we'll take any woody biomass and we're going to be working with, under the supervision of the foresters that, you know, in state and national forests. And I want, and one thing, if you have any waste material that, you know, the landfilling that we can use and have it characterized as renewable material, we'll take it. I personally, my engineering training was in waste conversion technologies and I'd really like to be able to take waste, you know, plastics. The junk that's being landfilled, there's no market for the recycling. Like to be able to use that, but right now the regulatory system doesn't understand the need for that. But anyway, we'll take your yard waste, we'll take any brush, doesn't matter, any kind of woody biomass, we'll take it. We don't want to take down healthy trees unless there's a reason for thinning so that the older trees can flourish. Because, you know, you do want to support growth of older, older mature trees because they're really, really good carbon sinks.
You know, one of the areas that is really overgrown is our watershed area. And I'm not sure if that's something that you're gonna be looking into because it could use some thinning up there. That is a concern because a couple of years ago, we had a fire, which was in the Warkham area. And we were scared it was gonna get into our watershed and it's so thick up there. So that I, you know, if there's a possibility to do some mitigation, that would be great.
Absolutely. Well, we would give that a first priority. And Gil Ramirez, he was, he was one of the people of a meeting two weeks ago. And and, you know, he mentioned that he's involved, as you know, with the the watershed. And our our goal is to make the environment there, you know, in any way we can and support the community doing that. So you just tell us what you need. I mean, if they're invasive, you know, brush growing in somebody's, you know, land, we'll, we'll be glad to take it away. So, you know, we'll be very receptive to those requests.
How, you know, you're, you know, the plant that you're gonna be putting in, how big of a footprint would it be?
Well, it depends on how squished we need to be or how much space we have. I believe we'll have plenty of space. But Dan, would you like to give a ballpark footprint?
Yeah, kind of at a minimum, it'd be about four hundred acres. But our preference will be to have some more room, maybe more in the order of twenty four acres.
Okay. And the last question I have is how much water will you, are you gonna be needing for what you're doing or, you know, for your process?
Okay, so so one of the things that, you know, we realize needs to be done in any of our western states that have the biggest problems would be stodding diseased trees because of, you know, long term drought and climate change and beetle kill, et cetera, is we need to be very careful with the waters. And so at the outset, our our water use will be fairly significant, you know, based on what we've, what we've calculated for starters. But we're gonna work really hard to see if there are ways to minimize that use further. Dan, do you want to give the latest figure that you came up with?
Yeah, we we recognize water is is a significant issue and and we need to to recycle and minimize to to the extent practical. There's energy limits, of course, that make it difficult to get right down to the the last gallon. But we expect to be able to get in the range of twenty thousand to to at most fifty thousand gallons per day of of water consumption.
And we will use then reuse that water as many times, it's mostly just for cooling. Because our our processes, you know, generate a lot of heat, as Dan told you. And then we will treat the water, we will desalinate it and we'll, we will return it to farmer use or it'll be good quality irrigation water. We'll process it however, you know, your water board recommends that we do. But we want to return it in some way as, you know, determined by our, by our local environmental people.
Okay, alright. Steve, thank you very much.
You're very welcome. Anything else? Yes? Yes, Aaron? Are, are you just waving? Okay. Thank you so much, everyone. And now that you, I believe you have my email address and my phone number. You know, feel free, send me your questions.
Yeah, alright, thank you. Thanks for the presentation.
Thank you, everyone.
Good evening, guys. As y'all remember, as you're October eighteenth regarding a blatant abuse of power and an ethics complaint along with electioneering laws that were being broken here in the city. I came to you as the chairman of Los Angeles County Republicans and the chairman of House District Forty Seven. Yes, I am a resident of the city, but when I reached out to Mayor Rico, it was in the capacity of leader slash representative of the Republican Party. I want the public along with city council to be fully aware of the significance of this matter. So on November second, I was informed by a friend that the mayor apologized to me at the city council meeting the night before. The funny thing about all this is I wasn't even informed of this. I am sure we could all agree that usually an apology is given to the person that the wrong was committed against. Doesn't make a lot, a whole lot of sense to apologize to someone who isn't even aware. Definitely made me question the sincerity of the apology. And the instant thought was, what a pathetic publicity stunt. The other thing that bothered me was the use of the word controversy in the mayor's apology. For you, Mayor, the definition of controversy is as follows. Discussion marked especially by the expression of opposing views, a dispute. The funny thing about this is there's no opposing views. City charter is law, just as electioneering laws are law. This is not controversy. This is you going rogue and breaking the law. Part of an apology is being accountable, sincere, and admitting what you did, what you did was wrong. Not using wordplay or deceiving the public. Obviously, this apology was recommended. Here's where it gets good. So after this pathetic publicity stunt of an apology, I was trying to become Colorado's next billionaire, buying tickets at the gas station to which the sub shop is at. You'll never guess who walks in. Mayor Rico. His gas pump wouldn't turn on, so he had to come ask the attendant, who I was engaged with, to turn on the pump. Guess what he said to me? Nothing. Not a hi, not a hey, did you catch the city council meeting? Not an I'm sorry, or even good luck on those Powerball tickets. It even gets worse. After a moment, he had to come back in. Now I bet you all will be floored by this. This time, he said nothing. Well, this should be apparent to all of us. This apology was obviously not sincere. I also went ahead and secured the video of this event for documentation. I wonder if Chief Glorioso was informed of this city council publicity apology. After further consideration, I am asking for Mayor Rico's resignation. I urge Mayor Rico to do the right thing and not to put the city in a jeopardizing position. This is not going away. I would like to leave you with something to ponder. Someone once told me, we've been doing this, like this for 50 years. And my response was, maybe you've been doing it wrong. Thank you, guys.
Ms. England?
Yes. Hello, mayor and councilpeople and people on the web and everybody and people here. My name's Alison England and I wanted to introduce myself to you again. I am a Broadway actor, TV and film actor. I teach all over the world now on Zoom. And I was here in 2010, 12 as head of music at TSJC then for two years when Felix was president and Debbie Uliberry was head of liberal arts. And during that time, I went into the community of Trinidad. I worked with SERT, the Beaux-Arts, directed for them, established six or seven different community programs, Adam and Sorry Theater. I went away, I went to Broadway and about five weeks ago, I came back. I moved back to Trinidad. I've just been selected as executive director at Main Street Live, which went from an equity house to a community theater. And the reason I'm back is because I came to Trinidad in May, in August, just on a fluke and following my actor gut. And I was amazed by how Trinidad's transformed. Energetic, expansive, creative, pulling new people from Denver. Dana Crawford's here, Margaret Hunt has been involved so much. And I just, I just felt like it was time for me to come back. And I wanted you to meet me. I'm reaching into the community aggressively in a good way. So we're going to start classes for children and teens. I'm working with all of the youth. I've only been at the job nine days, but I'm a New Yorker. So things go fast when they go fast.
I don't want to say things like that.
There's no business like Trinidad business. And I just want to open the door and say, what can we do as a theater? I feel like COVID, COVID for me and all of my Broadway constituents, it killed all of our contracts. Broadway has not come back. And I just feel like community theater can reach into our youth who have been really traumatized by learning on Zoom. They are completely, everybody is trafficked to technology. I was blessed last year, Boston Symphony Orchestra, Tanglewood hired me. I went into the schools, I directed from elementary school shows up to high school. You cannot believe how youth are suffering under beyond Zoom. So we're just bringing real life, community classes in voice, acting, dance, poetry, writing for kids. They, where they can't talk to you as a parent or a grandparent, they can write. So we're going to start that practically immediately. We've already got, we're, we're going to have, the tech shop is going to bring Dungeon and Dragon's Night to the theater. Mutiny Coffee is going to come and bring a band tonight. I'm reaching to the well. I've already talked to Ally over at the Mitchell. Just because I knew a lot of you all before and I just feel like, just come and meet me. Hi, Aaron, I like your beard. Just come and meet me. There's going to be January 11th is meet the new executive director. We're just opening the doors. Y'all come and have wine and cheese and I'm going to sing and Amy Wilson's going to play. And we're just going to let you in. Yes, my darling, you're, yes.
Oh, no, I believe, I've never met you, but Chris Miller and I, we do interviews at the radio station. And I believe you're going to come up tomorrow to be on the radio.
Well, I never got a confirm on that, but I'll be there if you want.
I told him, two o'clock.
That's great. And, and also, so you all know, thank you for that, you know. I'm working with the Schuler and I'm reaching into La Vida. And just how, how do we bring, especially kids and teens? And starting next week, I will go into the schools here and meet with the principals. And again, that's just something that I do in my life, you know? And I'm a young 60, but trust me, I've done almost everything when it comes to kids to professional. You know, and you've got, you've got a community that's on fire creatively. So let's plug it in. Ask me any question, have me for coffee, bring me over. I would love to know you, Phil, I've never met you. But I kind of love that our hair is very much the same. We're like on the same page, it's a little squashy. And, and also Rhonda Epper and Dana Crawford have met with me. And I'm going to be working with the college as a consultant to just go out all the way up to Denver to pull people to TSC. When I was head of music, it was TSJC, but I'm learning. And then the last thing I want to wrap with, Dana invited me to a party for Margaret Hunt, who at the state and national level works to bring theater and performing arts into communities. So I got to meet Margaret. Steve, you're, you're, you know, all of my life, so happy with that. But what was really cool is Margaret asked me, one of her constituents is a producer that just won the Tony in New York for Best Musical. And he does Broadway for All, BFA out of New York. But he's her best friend, he's always in Denver and he's looking to community theaters to bring Broadway for All. And I'm like, hell, yes. Like, what do we do? And then Denver, stories on stage reach to me. So we're going to start practically, simply, powerfully. Classes, reaching to community, community nights. But I need, I don't want you to be far away. If I know what you need, then I can service through performing arts into the community. And I just wanted to say hi. My door's open and I'm happy to come for coffee. I love it, especially coffee with whipped cream, Aaron. So invite me, tell me what you need. Like, do we need to send actors? We're going to do a thing with ADA, you know, a special event against abuse with Skate Land, with kids. I've already reached to the youth organization. We're going to get together and I'm just beginning.
Thank you for the energy, yeah.
Oh, well, thank you. You guys have opened to all of these people. And I thank you for the energy. It wouldn't have attracted me unless you did it. So I'm going to grab my purse with respect because I'm late for the community choir rehearsal when I was supposed to play. Great to meet you, great to meet, I'll look forward to it.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, okay, bye. Wally? I'll be, I'll be there next week.
That your talking, tip side up?
Will there be public comment during the public hearing?
No. At this point, I don't think there's going to be any public comments.
There will be, that's correct.
I, I think I'll hold for right now.
Okay, the tenth agenda. Item 58, approve of the regular meeting minutes on November 1, 2022. Item B, approve of the bills in the middle of the amount of one meeting, $104,506.94. Item C, approve of the payroll, November the 12th, 2022 through November 25th, 25th, 2022, in the amount of $419,000, $416.24. Entertain a motion?
Sooner.
Second? Call a vote?
DeBono?
Yes.
Riego?
Yes.
Shu? Shu? Okay. Thurman?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes.
With the item, item 6, 6A, 6A, public hearing for consideration of and repealing and reenacting 12-12, dash 5 of Article 2 of Chapter 12 with code of the city of Trinidad, Colorado for the purpose of adjusting the rates for security lighting to convert, to recover some of the costs associated with the same. Hearing is now open. Ms. Beale? Give us a presentation, please.
Good evening, everyone.
You got to sing, Linda.
Yeah. No, it is.
Everybody's going to leave. Okay, so the first one, basically both items are just cleanup of our organs. First one is relates to our security lighting, cost of services related to that. In a nutshell, though, it's just like I said, we're just trying to clean up our organs and so that there's some consistency along all four utilities, wording, that kind of stuff.
Council, do you have any questions?
No.
Pretty, I think it's pretty clear. Anybody? Okay.
Yep.
Anyone in the audience or listening in wants to speak for or against the refilling? Hearing is now closed. A second reading of the refining and reenacting 12-12, dash 5 of Article 2 of Chapter 12 with code of the city of Trinidad, Colorado for the purpose of adjusting the rates for security lighting to recover some of the costs associated with the same. I'll entertain a motion.
Sooner.
Second?
I think I'm second.
Any further discussion? Because we don't have anything yet, that. Okay, call a vote, please.
DeBono?
Yes.
Riego?
Yes.
Shu? Thurman? Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Item 6V, 6V, public hearing for consideration of an ordinance amending Article 2, electricity of Chapter 12 to be consistent with other language contained in Chapter 12, municipal utility with the code of the city of Trinidad and Trinidad Municipal Natural Gas Department Gas Tariff Number 1.
Hearing is now open. Ms. Beale?
Again, just further cleanup. This one relates to meter deposits and then also the businesses that are conducted at our residence. So again, we're trying to clean up the language. When we came forward with our gas, we basically mirrored our gas tariff language to, to our electric rate language. So same thing, just clean up.
Right, okay. Questions from council? Anybody listening? None? Okay. Anyone in the audience who wants to speak for or against the ordinance amendment? Hearing none? Hearing closed. Item 6V1, second reading of ordinance amending Article 2, electricity of Chapter 12 to be consistent with other, with other language contained in Chapter 12, municipal utilities with the code of the city of Trinidad and the Trinidad Municipal Natural Gas Department Tariff Number 1. Entertain a motion?
Sooner.
Second? Any further discussion? Hearing none, call a vote?
DeBono?
Yes.
Riego?
Yes.
Shu? Thurman? Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes.
Beyond item 6, public hearing, city council convened the board of ethics. The first thing we need to do is take a temporary adjournment to the regular meeting. So entertain a motion to temporarily adjourn. Regular meeting. Entertain a motion? Entertain a motion? Okay? Second?
Second.
Okay. Call a vote?
DeBono?
Yes.
Riego?
Yes.
Shu? Thurman?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, now we move into what we call a convening of the city council as the Board of Ethics. Entertain a motion to convene.
Mayor, I think it would be appropriate, I think, to appeal to Riego, please, to convene the Board of Ethics. Thank you. And mayor, I'm sorry, I think you probably should step off the dais. Thank you, sir, I'm sorry. Okay, sorry.
Yes, I am. And I'm not singing. The Board of Ethics has been convened due to the allegations of the petitioner, Councilman Aaron Williamson, against the respondent, Mayor Phil Rico. May I please have the right call?
DeBono?
Here.
Riego?
Here.
Shu? Thurman?
Here.
The complaint was received at city hall by Audrey Garrett, city clerk, and Les Downs, city attorney, and reads as follows. The narration of the allegation. On Monday, the 17th of October, 2022, the mayor, Phil Rico, called chief of police Glorioso. The chief was instructed to direct code enforcement to contact H.L. Bowman concerning raids on Mr. Bowman's property. The action alone is a violation of city, of the city of Trinidad's charter. Violation of the charter is an ethics violation. This is a statement of fact as proof exists to corroborate this claim. I am requesting that city council convene as the Board of Ethics at the soonest availability as described in the charter. And it is signed earnestly, Aaron Williamson, Councilman, City of Trinidad, Colorado. Mayor Rico, do you admit or deny in whole or in any part the allegations of the petitioner?
I do, ma'am. And one thing I just do want to say on that correction is, my correction is, when I reported it to the police department, I don't remember, to be honest, if I directed that issue and was it for that particular, other than the area? That's all I said. Now, we'll say this, my admittance.
My, my, could I? My apologies, I'm not, I'm not hearing the audio.
Okay. So the mayor was just making a brief statement of fact and he was going to, would you like him to repeat? I, I don't think this is the right time for him to do this. Councilman Williamson, and we can address that in a moment, mayor. Councilman Williamson, if you want him to repeat what he said, he can. But I think right now, we have to have the, the presiding council member, Riego, accept the admission and then decide exactly how we're going to proceed. So if you're okay with that and him not repeating.
I, I defer this procedure.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Do you want me to read anything else that I have prepared or not?
Not yet, not yet, mayor, thank you.
We're just merely reading the complaint against you, ma'am. So Mayor Rico did admit in whole or in part for the allegations presented by the petitioner. The respondent has admitted to the ethics allegations stated in the petitioner's complaint. It is now our duty as the Board of, the Ethics Board to determine what, if any, further punitive sanctions may be imposed or may be appropriate. So I'm asking council, if anybody has any thoughts or comments at this time?
Does this has to be decided tonight?
We can, we can, or delay.
You can, you can decide tonight or you can delay. And I will tell you that the code does not provide for what you should do. Because the code says if there is a denial of the complaint, then you set a matter for hearing. But if there is an admission, there's not direction on whether you should do it tonight or whether you should do it later on. I, I, I will defer to council. I think there are benefits to doing it right away, to having the, you know, to proceeding to the punitive sanction portion. But if, if there's, you know, reason, and I, I think it's up to council. I, I think I've said enough and you can do it either way.
Do the remaining councilmember staff that are here, is that or not on Zoom?
They, right.
Is everybody on Zoom?
Well, council and local trade is not here. But we, we have a quorum. We have the, you know, aside from the mayor and Councilman Williamson, we have the four of you. So there's not, you know, there isn't an absence that is causing you to need to delay. That answers your question.
Yes, it does.
Councilman Thurman, do you have anything to add?
Okay. Do you have a preference about how this is done, sir? Do you have a preference about how this is done, sir?
Uh, Bill, uh, we should go ahead and take care of it.
Okay. Now, Councilman Shu, I don't know how we're going. Councilman Shu, can you hear me?
I can hear you, but I can't talk.
Okay.
We can't hear you.
Ask, ask if you want to.
Yeah, can you please come in the council chambers?
I can.
Okay, good. Oh, good, thank you. There's always that possibility.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Yeah. Okay, good. Okay, good. Councilman Shu, can you, you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Okay, good.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you now, yes.
Okay.
So, so do you have a preference about how we handle this one or it's done tonight or whether it's reset for the next regular council meeting?
Well, in my opinion, I would rather, uh, do it at the next council meeting, that way we have everybody together in there, it's kind of tough to talk from here.
Okay.
But I, I'll go with whatever the other council members, uh, agree on.
Okay, thank you. So, one and one. I think, if I may, Matt, Matt, and Chairperson, Councilman Dubono, I think it's back to you, sir. Before the presiding officer.
What? I, I lost connection, what, what was, uh, Councilman Shu's? And what, I'm sorry.
He suggested that, uh, he would rather have it continued until the next regular meeting.
Okay.
The vote.
I'd like to, I'd like to just apologize to everybody, I would have much preferred to be there in person, but, uh, I, we, we have a COVID positive case in our home and I'm not entirely certain of about it, so, uh, I would, did not want to risk coming in to expose anybody.
Okay, thank you, sir. Killson.
Tonight is private with me.
Killson.
I would prefer that we get this, get through this, I mean, everybody is prepared for it. Do we, Councilman, do we need to take a vote on whether we continue or not?
Well, I think you have, oh, you mean, do you need to make a motion? I, I think you do, is a, is an action item to have the record clear that you guys have decided to be going to proceed tonight. I think that would be appropriate.
Okay. I need a motion to continue.
What, what are we?
Okay.
I'm sorry, I missed, I missed what Councilwoman Griege said, what?
Are we, we're taking a vote on whether to proceed with the ethics, uh, action or to delay it until everybody is in the room present? You can't vote, Mayor Rico can't vote, it's up to the four of us that are here tonight to vote. And calling for the motion to either continue with the, the ethics, it's not a hearing, it's the ethics proceedings, or to delay it until next, till we're all together. So I'm asking for a motion, one way or the other. Correct?
Yes, ma'am.
I need a motion, you guys, I can't make a motion.
A motion.
For a motion, I'll make a motion, then we wait until the next meeting and everybody's in there.
There's already a motion on the floor.
Okay.
Sorry.
I can't hear that.
Okay.
I'm seconded. What, what was the motion on the floor?
The motion on the floor is to proceed with the proceedings.
Tonight.
There's a motion. I need a second.
Second, okay. I think Councilman Shu did second.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Okay. Councilman.
How come Councilman?
Councilman Dubono made the motion, Councilman Shu seconded the motion, and now we're, we're going to continue with the roll call vote. Can you hear us? Can you hear us, Aaron? Okay. Okay, can you hear all the vote?
Dubono?
Yes.
Shu?
Here.
Thurman?
Yes.
Griege?
Yes. Okay, we're gonna proceed. So, now we have to decide what, if any, punitive sanctions we're going to put on Mayor Rico.
Where are the three options?
I mean, I, there are no options, the options are up to you, you can decide. You know, just, uh, counselor, explain to them, you know, what our options are.
So, section two, our second one point two of the, the code, does talk about violations or sanctions. And the violations or sanctions are specified in the code are that counsel could issue a public warning, verbal or written, issue a public reprimand or censure, verbal or written, or issue a written public admonishment. And tho- those are the, the punitive sanctions. You can also, uh, decide that, you can do something else outside of that, that those, and I have definitions of those terms, if you like that, but, uh, those are the, the considerations or the, the sanctions that are specified, the definition of the last one, the other one. Okay? You want the definition of admonishment?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, the definition of admonishment is to caution or advise to counsel against wrongful practices.
Do you want me to go to another council person?
Yes.
Friday? Councilman Thurman?
Are you asking me?
What, what direction or what action do you deem would be fair?
You just gave me that position.
The admonishment?
Yeah.
Okay. Councilman Shu?
Councilman Shu, can you hear us?
I can hear very well, but.
I would like to, uh, make a point of order. Please.
You can't do that.
Yeah. Councilman Williamson, since you're not a member of this body, I would say you can't make a point of order. But I will ask the chair to call her, be with just a moment. Okay, it is appropriate for her to recognize you in just a moment with respect to what sanction you're asking for as a complaining party. But if you could, if you could just give us a moment, please, so that Councilman Shu, the presiding officer, can, can just finish their conversation on, on their thoughts, please. And the mayor, I think, should also be given a chance to be recognized, but after Councilman Williamson.
Okay, I, I see your frustration on your face, Councilman Williamson. But I think in all fairness to all people, all the council people and Mayor Rico, and also yourself, that we each express what we feel is appropriate. We'll let you speak after the mayor, but I'm just wanting to see what the four councilmen that are going to vote have on their minds first, and then we'll go, I'll, I'll speak last, and then we'll have Mayor Rico and then yourself. Is that agreeable? I mean, whether it is or not, but I just want you to feel satisfied with the hearings. Okay, well. No responses. Uh, Councilman Shu? I'm sorry. Do you have any thoughts on the process?
I don't know, effectively, I didn't catch all of what, uh, Mr. Downs said as far as, uh, admonishment and a couple of the others, you know. Uh, we're kind of breaking up in here, but, uh, I, I didn't really, really catch what, what we're really looking at.
Okay. Is it possible for you to even step here close to an open door so you can hear, counselor?
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Downs, if you would, I think it'd be a good idea to go over those three items again, because there are some that are worse than others.
That's correct, yes, sir. I, I will, I suppose, okay.
Okay.
Hi there, Councilman Shu. So, Mr. Williamson, so you know, Councilman Shu has just come in here. So I can, I can go over these again.
Yeah, I can't hear very clearly.
Okay, I understand, sir. And, Councilman, the, the, uh, sanctions that are specified in the code are to issue a public warning, verbal or written, to issue a public reprimand or censure, verbal or written, or to issue a written public admonishment. And the, the admonishment is defined as to caution or advise to counsel against wrongful practices. Censure is formal resolution of a legislative body reprimanding a person, usually one of its own, for specified conduct. Reprimand is to reprove severely, to censure formally, especially with authority. So, um, warning, admonishment, censure, reprimand, I would say is the order of severity. Okay? Would you like to weigh in on that, sir, would you like to?
No, I, I understand what you're saying there.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have any preference, Councilman Shu?
Well. I don't know that, I guess the the reprimand would, which would be, that, that was number two you had?
It's actually number four, but to reprove severely, to censure formally. That's the most serious.
There's a point of order, Luis Lopez mentioned on chat. He thinks we should allow public.
Okay, we're not allowed public, uh, well, so.
It's not a, uh, Mr. Lopez, it's not a public hearing, per se.
And. Okay.
I, I have to meet.
I apologize. Uh, but under the, um, the agenda, it is a public hearing, which, uh, should be allowed for all and everyone to chime in and be sworn in for public comment, uh, including the mayor and the council member who made the complaint, in my opinion. And I may be wrong under the city charter, um, a- and so I apologize for the interruption, but in my opinion, um, i- if it's a public hearing, the public should be heard, including both the complainant and the respondent. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And the complainant and the respondent will be heard. And this is a public hearing in that we wanted this to happen publicly and for, you know, the public to view. But it is not for people to weigh in on whether or not they like the mayor or whether or not they like Councilman Williamson. This is a, a hearing to be conducted publicly without the input of all the public to weigh in on this. Simply, uh, Councilman Williamson to speak his piece, uh, in a moment, and then the mayor to speak his piece. So that is, and, and also, Councilman Williamson, um, was, if he had had witnesses, I don't believe he had any, but that is another reason why it's a purpose to proceed this evening. But I hope that answers your questions, Commissioner Lopez.
That's your advice, and I'll accept that, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, I, I may, I can make my, my feelings and thoughts.
Yes, ma'am. And then I would say after you make your thoughts and feelings, then would be appropriate for Councilman Williamson, in that place.
Thank you. My, my responses might be a little bit winded, but, you know, um, I was telling somebody, I think it was, it was, uh, Mr. Downs, that everybody wants to be on the rodeo. In the rodeo, too, you have to sit on, on the bucking horse, and that's where we're at today. And unfortunately, we're not robots. We're not supreme beings, we're human beings. And, um, I've worked with Mayor Rico for many years, and he's done a lot of good for the city. Did the man make a mistake? Yes, he did. Did the man make an error in judgment? Yes, he did. But he apologized publicly for that, for, excuse me, for anybody that wanted to hear his apology. And I can't, I don't want to define the man by one mistake that he made with six years going on, well, seven years going on in the years as a city councilman. And I feel, I would like to see his public apology along with the acceptance of that policy by this council as the only action this council will take against the mayor. That's my feeling, ma'am. So Mayor Rico, sir, continue.
I think Councilman Williamson should go first.
Okay.
I'm sorry, just as we.
Okay, we changed your line down.
Sorry.
Yeah, it's okay.
Councilman Williamson, are you there?
I'm sorry, are you calling on me?
Yes, sir.
You're calling on me for what at this point?
To comment on, um, anything you want to say with respect to your complaint, what, what sanction you think should be imposed, anything you want to say that you feel is relevant towards, uh, this, this proceeding.
Look, this, um, this is not an indictment against, uh, Mayor Rico's performance. Mayor Rico is an outstanding mayor, uh, an exceptional mayor, hardworking mayor. Uh, anyone that asks me, I tell them that. I've shared that with him on multiple occasions, and I genuinely believe it. But the amount of good that a person does and, um, the good results that they get does not make them immune from following the rules. Um, I've had email exchanges with the mayor, uh, concerned about him acting in a, uh, a lone wolf fashion. We've met in person and have discussed that, and at that time, I told him that if these behaviors continue, that, um, I would elevate it, and it wasn't, it wasn't, um, a threat or, uh, em- empty words, I just would like to see him go by what, what the rest of us have to go by too, and that is the charter. Um, on its face value, you know, people can claim it's not that egregious. One, one could make the argument, though, it's acting out of retribution, that's, that's potential. But, um, the irrefutable facts are, he did that, he apologized for it, and it does have the appearance of using a public office or personal, um, animosity. I, I'm not, I'm not prepared for this tonight, I was told that this wasn't happening until more, uh, around this afternoon. Um, I, again, I apologize for not being there, I'm pretty certain that I've been, been exposed to COVID and may have it, so I did not want to expose that to you. I would offer this, um, this whole thing from the beginning has been a sham in the sense of people couldn't hear what was being said, everyone had to ask, uh, repeat what you were saying. Councilman Shu clearly said that he would much prefer it to see it deferred until everyone in the room. And, uh, Councilman Dubono, apparently, the claim is, he made a motion for it to occur tonight. Why in the world some of them do that, I have no earthly idea. It was obvious that we're not prepared for this. If we were prepared for this, we wouldn't even need to list the, um, potential, um, punishments. We would be familiar with that, we would discuss it. People don't know what they're voting on, some Councilman Shu made the point that we should defer, and then suddenly he's seconding Eli's? I mean, I, I, I don't see it. But, uh, if, if we don't do something stringent, we're, uh, we're failing. But that's my opinion. Um, this should have been deferred.
Mayor Rico?
Yeah, I got this written down, I've got a couple other things, um, to say besides that. I'll take this down. Because this is my admittance, okay? On October the seventeenth, I received a call concerning the possible sign violation, okay? Unfortunately, also reported another issue at the same time. I reported the issues to the police department, and I did not use proper protocol and inadvertently, which basically means just off the cuff, violated the ethics code. violated the ethics code in reporting these issues, whereas I should have reported them to the city manager and let him handle them. And that is pretty much the essence of just my admittance. I do admit that I made a mistake. In everything that I did in reporting, I did not do that intentionally, like I mentioned in my apology letter, which I did have. And I meant back, Mr. Bowman, that I was having a copy. I have a copy of the apology letter I was going to give to him tonight, but he was. Whether or not he believes the sincerity of my apology, it is there. You know, and I just feel like, I think it's it's unfortunate that we are at this point. And I think that we need to move forward. There was a sleight of hand that I just, like I said, just, I should have not have done it. But sometimes when you're faced with certain things, all of a sudden, you do something. And that's the fine line that we as councilmen are faced with sometimes. We sit on a fine line, and it's very easy to cross that line, unfortunately, yes, ma'am. So, I don't even admit that. But I just believe that I, with all of my heart, I tried to do the best that I possibly can for the city of Trinidad and its constituents. I hold no disregard of any kind for Mr. Bowman. I don't even hardly even know him, yes. The report they gave tonight, it was kind of silly in a lot of ways. But unfortunately, it is what it is.
All righty. Anybody want to make a motion?
You know, Madam Chairwoman, I would say that in looking at the code, I do think that you have to select from one of the options that is in here. And I would say therefore that on the low end of the scale, it would be a public warning, verbal or written. And on the upper end of the scale, it would be a public admonishment. So, I just say that for your information.
Thank you for the clarification. All right. Did everybody hear the clarification from the councilman? We have to pick from the four. So, anybody on council that is eligible to make a motion and vote, please do so at the time.
Can you hear us, Councilman Schu?
Yes, I can.
Okay.
Thank you.
Would you, I'm calling for a motion. The chair can't make a motion.
What?
Motion.
Yes, sir.
Can we, can we break the motion again?
Okay, one more time for.
Yeah, it's kind of off the norm.
Okay, so the motion will be for what sanction you want the other four, the other three members of the ethics board to consider. And the options are a public warning, verbal or written, a public reprimand or censure, verbal or written, or a written public admonishment. And a public warning would be least serious. Reproman or censure would be in the middle. A public admonishment would be the most serious.
Councilman Thurman, do you want to proceed?
At this point, everything's jumbled together. Is it possible to retract my, to have this done?
I can't hear that at all.
He just asked if it would be possible to retract his earlier vote. And I'm, on having it tonight, and it's not. I'm sorry, there's been a vote, and it's been decided.
You know, I'm taking a bold step here, but after five years with him, you know. You know, we've gone through a whole agenda. Just to kind of calm your nerves, Councilman Thurman, we've gone through a whole agenda. We've done the business for the city of Trinidad. We have a quorum. There's no reason to delay this any longer. And I'm not trying to.
No, I'm just, the way that it's happening.
It is, and it's, you know, we've lived our lives for two years.
I want to be fair to Mayor, because I have.
Okay.
In my opinion, I had it done. I mean, I would love to have it done, have this off his plate, but now it's turning into a circus kind of.
I'm sorry you feel that way. I mean, the options are, and again, I'm sorry, but I think that ship has sailed, and you.
Right.
So, yes, sir.
I made the motion for tonight instead of.
What do you guys mean, the ship has sailed?
I'm sorry, sir, you cannot comment, Mr. Bowman.
I'm the victim here. How can I not comment? What are you talking about?
Sir, please refrain from speaking.
So, I believe Councilman made the motion for, to have this tonight instead of.
But it's decided.
That's good. I make a motion for a public admonishment. Can I make a statement?
Yes.
I, I made a mistake when I seconded that motion because I thought it was for a delay. I didn't really hear what Eli said, and I apologize for that. But as far as I, my vote, I would vote that we finish it tonight because we already started it. And my vote, my motion would be that Mr. Rico would get a reprimand. And that's my opinion right there. Public or whatever, I guess that would be the number two, which is, I think, important that he does get a reprimand.
Okay. Thank you, Councilman Schu. Did you hear that? Did you hear that, Councilman Williamson?
Are you asking me that?
Yes, Councilman Williamson.
I heard what Frank said, yes. I, uh, council, I would like to ask you a clarifying question, if I may. Wes?
Yeah, that's fine. I, go ahead.
I was, I was told that if this went to the, I don't know what we're referring to this portion as, but if it came to this portion of it, that I would be able to call witnesses. And then I asked if, because I had expressed to you earlier my concerns about health complaints, and you said tonight would be just the reading of the complaint, and then if it's accepted or not, I said, okay, because I would need time to build my case. At this point, though, because we're here, I would like to recognize H.L. at some level and have him be able to speak his piece. It may be influential as to what council decides. And again, this is not an indictment on Mayor Rico's performance. He expands a phenomenal amount of energy for the city. That does not entitle him to run roughshod over the charter or the constituents of the city. And I would like to recognize H.L. and let him speak his mind.
Council, I get that, you know, there's been a, it's been set. And we are at this point, like, to move forward toward whatever item that the council wants to consider.
And Mayor, if I could, please. So, Councilman Williamson, I can't respond to conversations that you and I had today because you have an expectation in terms of confidentiality. So, I have said, we had a conversation. But please understand, I'm just not going to respond to you because I don't want to violate any of those considerations. I do think that, even though we talked about witnesses and that possibility and those things, and that it could proceed tonight, I do think it's appropriate to allow Mr. Bowman to speak for a couple of moments. He is, now, I want to say, though, this complaint is brought by Councilman Williamson. It was not a complaint brought by Mr. Bowman. So, insofar as that is the case, I think it's appropriate for Mr. Bowman to speak so as to minimize the likelihood of the expectation that Mr. Bowman may also bring a complaint, even though I think it's going to be adjudicated. So, it's probably, you know, the equivalent of double jeopardy. I do think it's appropriate to let Councilman Williamson have Mr. Bowman speak for a couple of moments to the Board of Ethics.
Okay, on the advice of council, Mr. Bowman, we've got the floor, sir.
You know, Karen, I'm just sitting here listening to this, and I'm just mind blown that this is even moving forward like this. Especially after what Mr. Williamson said. I mean, I don't know what the deal is. I don't know why this is being pushed through so quickly. At the end of the day, this, this, this action was an abuse of power. This man works for me. I'm a taxpayer. I've been back here 14 years. I pay my taxes. I do what I need to do. You guys don't see me complain about something. So, when I come forward with a complaint like this, it's serious. And, you know, Mr. Rico says he's got an apology for me. Well, why didn't you apologize to me at the gas station? You came in twice. You got it. It's on video. What a dirty shame. You call that an apology? Seriously? I, you know, for council to even question the aspect of this man, regardless of his good doings, he did something wrong. He weaponized his department. And if he would have took the time to go through the process of what had taken place, you know what? He could have talked to Danny Rosetti. Oh, H.L.'s already dealing with it. He could have talked to Bob Just. He could have talked to Mr. Rucker, who knew had, who I had a meeting with him the following day. But instead, Mr. Rico goes rogue, decides, you know what, I'm going to call the chief of police, and then puts the chief in a situation. Seriously? And then this thing going on, and you guys keep passing it on like it's nothing. You know, the truth of the matter is, is what happened when we sold that property, you know, Phil Long? Why did that go to the.
I'm sorry, sir, that, I don't.
It's a wrong.
No.
Uh, we got to do what's best for Trinidad. Seriously? You say you're going to supersede the law? When he had to go to testify in Denver about the fast-tracked train? You know what? Did he testify on the behalf of council? No, he didn't. He testified upon himself. This has got to stop.
Okay, any other comments regarding the allegations in the complaint, Mr. Bowman?
Say that again, Wes?
Yeah, any other, any other comment on the allegations in the complaint?
It's not allegations. They're facts. We can.
Okay, he's admitted to it. All right, it's a word I'm accustomed to using. Any other comments on the admissions?
I just think it's a dirty shame that me as a citizen and also as the chair of the Republican Party are even in this position right now, that I even have to lose sleep over this or even have to threaten a lawsuit to get something straight where someone isn't weaponizing a department. Are you kidding me 20 minutes later, after a call? I mean, and you know what? Phil has my number. He could have called me at any time and said, hey, H.L., you know, your weeks are getting cut out, and we were talking, hey, I just wanted to let you know. No, that didn't even take place. You know what he did? He called the chief of police. Are you kidding me? It's a dirty shame that elected official would even try something like that.
Okay, Mr. Bowman, thank you.
I want to respond on something. You know, you bring up this thing about, the thing that the whistle stopped, which is why I would need gas. The reason why I did not recognize him in any way because I knew the situation, and I didn't want it to escalate it. If he said something to me, I didn't want to have to say something back to him. So, I avoided saying anything to him, and I thought that was best.
Good, thank you.
The gentleman that made the motion this last, left a day or so. Do we have a second on Mr. Councilman DiBono's motion?
What was the motion you made? I mean, I didn't hear what he said at all.
He made a motion favor admonishment. Yes.
Not admonishment. It was, Councilman DiBono, was your motion for, it wasn't admonishment. Was it for a reprimand?
That was his motion. Now it's my motion.
Okay.
I made the motion that gets a reprimand, which would be number two.
Wait, we have a motion.
It was his motion.
It was my motion. Was it Eli's?
Yes, it was.
No, it wasn't. It was, it was mine. It was.
Okay.
Yeah, pay attention up there.
I'm sorry. I'm doing the best I can. I don't do this every day, sir. Okay, we have a motion on the floor for what?
Reprimand.
For reprimand?
Yes, public reprimand and apology.
Is there a second? Is there a second?
Okay.
Motion dies for lack of a second.
Yes.
Second. Any other motions that council wants to, or it's void, wants to entertain?
Make a motion for admonishment.
There's a motion on the floor for admonishment? Is there a second for admonishment? That fall fails for lack of a second. Any other motions on the floor?
Karen, when you have a motion, can you state, please, making the motion?
I will. I made, Councilman DiBono made a motion for admonishment. I'm waiting for a second.
Second. I thought we already had one.
No. Councilman Thurman made a second for admonishment. Please call the vote.
DiBono?
Yes.
Schu?
No.
Thurman?
No.
I'm sorry.
I said no.
No?
Gregel?
No.
Any other discussion, any motions, any trying to have you find consensus on what you want to recommend or what?
Okay, let's start over again. What would you, what would you prefer as some form of punitive action against the mayor? What is your preferred?
Something written.
Such as?
A letter.
In the form of a warning? Okay.
So, you're asking for a public warning, right?
That was a yes. He nodded in the affirmative.
Okay. Schu wants public warning. I'm sorry, DiBono. Councilman Thurman? Councilman Schu?
Yeah, I'm all down.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
He said we're going, we're going.
Okay, then, is called for a motion?
I make a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Call the vote, please. DiBono?
Yes.
Schu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Gregel?
Yes.
Okay, written public warning?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Do we have to do a formal conclusion of the public hearing, I mean, the ethics hearing?
Yes, there's nothing else. No, I believe that you can, yeah, you can adjourn than being in the ethics board.
Roll call? Necessary, counselor?
Um, no. Well, there should be a motion to adjourn the ethics board.
I will, I ask for a motion?
A second.
No, you have to, I mean, you need, I can't.
You can't motion. I ask, I make a motion to return to the regular meeting.
Is there a second?
As of November 15.
Second.
Call the vote, please.
DiBono?
Yes.
Schu? Thurman?
Yes.
Gregel?
Yes.
Okay, I need a roll call to reconvene the regular meeting of November the 15th, 2022, regular meeting.
Sorry. DiBono?
Here.
Gregel? Schu?
Here.
Thurman?
Here.
Williamson?
Here.
Rico?
Yes. Okay, we will go on to item eight. Uh, item seven, unfinished business, we have none. Then we go on to item eight A, and that is a first reading of annulance authorizing the conveyance of real property owned by the city of Trinidad three point nine four acre lease to Trinidad off of County Road twenty-eight point two to Tanner Backerak. And for approval that's in city public hearing for December the sixth, twenty twenty-two. At uh, six p.m., I guess, whenever we have that. So, I need someone to introduce.
I will introduce.
You're doing a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Need a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion? Ms. Garrett, do you have anything to add to that?
Sir, uh, Mayor and City Council, we, um, solicited comps for this property. And um, based on those comps, that's what the value is in the ordinance presented to you this evening. Uh, Mr. Backerak has accepted, um, the proposed price and will be paying for half of the survey as well.
Okay. Any uh, discussion from council? Council? Anybody left, Frank, any, any questions on it?
No.
Okay, how about you, Mr. Williamson?
No.
Okay. Call the vote?
DiBono?
Yes.
Gregel? Yes. Chu?
Yeah.
Thurman?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Go on to uh, item nine, which is council reports, starting with Mr. DiBono.
My Los Angeles County Veterans Council, they're gonna have a Fort Wooten, uh, they're gonna have a Pearl Harbor gun show. It's going to be December third and fourth at Fort Wooten. They're gonna, it's the, it's also sponsored by the American Legion Post XI. Uh, there's gonna have knives, there's gonna be knives crafts, military items, admission, ten dollars procedures, and I think that's our eight dollars, and kids under fourteen are free, but there'll be more flyers put out. Uh, this is December third and fourth, so.
Okay.
So I have.
Karen?
I have nothing to report.
Nothing?
No. Mr. Williamson, do you have anything to report?
No, nothing for me. Nothing, ma'am.
Okay. I, I don't have anything, I just wanted to ask one question. I just, uh, I typically do, but like I said, I just went through COVID myself and uh, just got off of uh, quarantine. Uh, but I did want, I just wanted to say, uh, uh, Mr. Rooker, do you know when we're going to have a report from Monument Lake? Typically, we do have sometime in, around this time or December.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I've not heard, but I will check on that, and we'll make sure to get that on the, on the, an agenda coming up.
Okay. Other than that, like, so I, I have nothing, so.
Yeah.
Uh, it, what's your, do you have anything to report?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, just a, a handful of items that I wanted to give a couple of updates on, starting with the park, uh, the, the pond at Central Park. Um, we, we recognize that it's not in the best shape right now. So, um, what we plan to do over the winter is dredge the pond. So a lot of the stuff that's on top of it right now, we're hoping will settle, so we can dredge it out of there. And uh, we're gonna do as much maintenance as possible to make sure we come back next year with uh, as beautiful park as possible. I know that's a concern for a lot of our residents, and it's a priority for us as well. So we're looking to find the equipment as we speak to do that dredging, make sure we get all the gunk up off the bottom, freshen the entire lake, and, and have that be a showcase for the community. Uh, first dream, I know that's been coming, I know that we've made promises, and I uh, apologize for the delay. We did do some redesign based on the presentation that was uh, done a few weeks ago and the comments we received back from the city council. But I'm happy to report that the bid documents are done, and it will get bid out this week. Um, so, we're, we're excited to get that project going. Um, I wanted to mention two letters of support that have been requested for the city for some grant applications, and just make everyone aware of that. The first one is for a, a CHRISI grant, which is the Consolidated Rail Infrastructure and Safety Improvement Grant. So it's part of um, the Southwest Chief Signal and Safety Enhancement Project. So it, it adds more safety to the rail corridor. So we definitely wanna support that. And then, um, also, there's a letter of support for the um, United States Fish and Wildlife Service for a grant application uh, for our fish and voter passage down at the dam. So we're, we're supporting um, the Purgatory Watershed Partnership on that, a grant application. Um, we had our vote passed for the broadband question. So we now have uh, the approval from the voters to move forward however we wish. The direction I've received from council based on previous conversations is to conduct a broadband feasibility study as step one. So we will be moving forward with that and putting a scope of work together for that, and I will keep the council informed as to how that progresses. And then last, but certainly not least, I just wanted to publicly thank City Manager Margaret Hunt for all of her efforts and help. Um, and she'll, she'll be missed, uh, in helping us out, but her, her contributions were great to the city, so I wanted to thank her for that.
Mr. Rooker, what is the cost of the uh, internet feasibility study?
Um, we do not know yet. We will submit a formal solicitation, and pricing will be an evaluation factor as part of that process. So the respondents will give us what their estimated price is. And we, uh, also, since it's a proposal, we'll have the opportunity to negotiate that with a selected vendor, so we'll try to keep that as, as low as possible.
Thank you.
Anything else? Is that it?
Nope, that's it.
Ms. Downs?
Thank you, Mayor Councilmembers. I just wanted to say also, our second ballot initiative also passed. Exactly, the, the, that also passed. And so, it was a, it was a good uh, election for the city. And, and also, I just wanted to say to, you know, all the people who ran in the last election, the winners and the people who competed, congratulations. It seems like everybody did well. Also, thanks to Mr. Murphy for, yes, yeah, calling on you, I know, you didn't think you were gonna get called on, for keeping us up to date and live and sending the election results. It was, it was very nice, so thank you. But that is all I have, Mayor, councilmembers, thank you.
Okay, that, um, motion to adjourn? Second?
Second.
Call the vote?
DiBono?
Yes.
Gregel? Yes. Chu?
Yeah.
Thurman?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?